Greetings, everyone. Good afternoon. Thank you all for being here this afternoon. I was not planning on doing this, so welcome. Can we take a roll call? Jessica?
Yeah, Pam Ross. Anne Marshall.
Present.
Brandon G.
Present.
Doris Graham.
Here.
Craig Larson.
I'm here.
Mary Lukey.
Here.
Kevin M. Martin.
Here.
Alrighty, we're all here. I don't even have my board docs open. Imagine that. I didn't think I was gonna be doing this. So, let's get started with the first. I need to open board docs. Totally not ready for this. Sorry, guys.
Not a problem. I think it's a one-item agenda, so.
Yeah, Madam Chair, it's a review of the telephone survey that Ken has developed.
Wonderful. Well, let's, thank you very much, my friends, for helping out a poor vice chair who was unprepared. Can we, could we please have Ken's remarks about the, about the report? Let's, let's give it a go.
You bet. It's good afternoon, everyone. It's nice to see all of you again. I look forward to the time when we can see each other face-to-face down the road. St. Louis isn't too far for me, so I want to first also thank you for being patient. And with my, I don't know if you saw, I had my assistant was standing on the back of my chair getting petted and.
Yeah, your black cat.
She's always picks the worst times, you know. She does it about once a day, and I'm like, really? Now's the time? So, what I'd like to do is go through the draft of the survey, and you'll see that there are some, some holes here, and potential holes, because I wanted to look more at structure than I did. Try to bear down on things that you might have some input on directly. So, let me take this kind of in chunks, if you will. The draft. Now, do you have the draft, or is it in board docs?
It's in board docs.
Okay, alright. Wanted to make sure I didn't share the screen. If I had to do that, I would do that. The first page is a direct repeat from last time, and these were, of course, the qualification questions. We need a head of household, not an old-sounding teenager. We need a registered voter.
Ken, excuse me, Ken, can you share your screen? I didn't pull my board docs up.
Let me make, make sure it's available to share. Let me get it, let me get it going here. Now it's my turn to apologize. Never realized I had so many clients to start with us.
Ken, I could share it up on screen if that would be helpful. This is Paul.
That would be great. Now, I'm sorry, I had a different folder on, and it's not, it's not in that. I'm in the wrong.
Well, thank you, thank you. Appreciate it.
And then if you can hand over control, I can run through things. But when you see this, you'll notice that questions one, two, and three are the same, and we have broken down the community by North County, South County, West County, and within, within the city limits. Thank you. Within the city limits of St. Louis. I'm sorry, but yeah, within the city limits of St. Louis. So, I'll have four groups like last time, and we will have 150 completed interviews, just as we did last time. And I think for the size of population, statistically, you're in a better position if we do 600 from a quality control standpoint, as we did last time. And these are good divisions, according to you, and so we'll be able to do an apples-to-apples-to-apples and so on comparison between the areas, see what's changed, and then see how the answer are our most immediate questions. Moving on to the next page. Can I do that now? Okay. Let's just, let's start at the top and then kind of work our way down, because there's a section here at the top. Do you remember last time, we had kind of a complex way of asking people about their experience at the college, either as a credit student, as a non-credit community member, did somebody in their family? And it went on for several questions. Now, we got the information we needed, but I said, we've gotta be, there's gotta be a better way to clean that up. And so, yeah, I think I found it. We asked about credit classes, and number four, we ask about spouse or one of your children. So, the first one, question four, is you yourself, and this is spouse and one of your children taking at least one credit class, and then ever been to the campus for a non-credit event? Just to see if they're on campus, or have been on campus recently, or even in the deep past. You'll see that everyone gets asked all three questions. So, we don't say, okay, if you've taken a class yourself, we'll skip over the other two. We want to see every experience that household has, and so they may say, yes, 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 and that's okay. That'll tell us really accurately what the utilization is among our people who we're talking to.
Ken?
Yes.
Hey, this is Rod. On question four, you need to add in the Harrison Center. Just in that list.
Oh, okay, yes. Got it. Thank you. And don't, don't be afraid to stop me along the way. Sometimes I get rolling, and don't put up a hand to speak up, because I can only see half of you now. Question seven is a branding question that, that I put in there because I think it could positively impact what you say about, about the proposal. An opportunity to expand minds, this is not copy, okay, to change more lives, to expand more minds. You might find out that people sort of get it, and they get it in a way that will feed into your opportunity to communicate and reinforce your positioning line at the same time. And it's, it's a pretty simple question to ask, because we sort of give them the answer. Well, we don't say, what's, what's the slogan, and expect them to remember it, but what does it mean to you? I think that's good. And what do you think it would say, number eight, what do you think it would say to a prospective student? So, what does it say to you, and what does it say to a prospective student? And just trying to get down into the, into the bone marrow, if you will, of how people relate to that slogan. And you also don't want to get, don't want to have the hardest questions coming right up front. And it's not really hard. This is just ask for an opinion. And we move to the next page. We continue with opinion questions. And as you see now, these are ones that I've come up with, but I would welcome additions, subtractions, amendments to this list. And it says, I'm now going to read you a short list of some of the types of students who are attending, are attending St. Louis Community College this year. After I finish, please tell me which type you think makes up the largest part of the student population. The purpose there is to see, are they on track with what is reality or not? I want to find out if they think it's just high school, or number one is high school graduates, or number one is people who are retraining. We need to find that out, and then we follow it with, okay, what is it that you think draws this group, the number-one group? And we have a list of possibilities there, and they can list, they can check off, I say check off, interviewer will check off all that apply on question 10. So, we really kind of can cross-tab and see how frequently is having courses and majors that fit careers is mentioned by people who have been to the campus, who have taken a non-credit course, whatever the case may be. And then, because we know we can, we're never going to be able to have everything on the list that we want to, we ask them question 11, is there another, are there other factors? And see if they come up with something we didn't think of, and that'll all be in the mix. So, this is group number one. Who do you think is the biggest student group by description attending St. Louis Community College right now? Then we just repeat that with 12, 13, and 14, and you'll notice the question says, and by the way, I'm not going to be asking you what you think is group number three, number four, and so on. I want to do that, because I think they go, wow, that first one was exhausting. Are we gonna have to go through all of these? No, because really, the fourth highest group, the third highest group isn't as important to me as their perception of the dominant two, top two groups on campus. So, we go through the same thing again, and on 14, we ask them about number, their number-two group, if there's anything else. Then we get a little tricky. The 15 is for people who said earlier, I don't know. I don't know who the biggest group is. So, they skip all the way over to that portion. Individuals who don't fit that qualification, on their answer on question 14, we'll skip to 17. But those who said, I don't know, who tried to get out of answering the question, will be given a chance to say, well, what do you think generally are the reasons that, that people make a choice for a community college? That way, they, those who are a little skittish about saying, well, I don't have, I haven't had a high school student in my house for 10 years. I'm not sure I'd know. We'll still get their information. It just won't be tied to a specific group. So, you have the same list of reasons, and then other factors. Then we're all back together again. That is, everyone who, who was able to pick out a a group that they thought was number one and number two, and those who weren't, okay, that part's done. And then we put another incentive statement in there. Thank you for your help with these questions. I appreciate you staying with me. I have just a few more. That's a way of saying, don't worry. We're not going to take up your entire evening, and it works. It works to do that. So, we introduce the general idea and general cost of ballot issue using $15 or so, because it's a shade over $15, and we're going to be dealing with a lot of numbers here. And so, I don't want to have to go, it's $15.10, and they're going, whoa, wait a minute. And then on the next, on other questions, we have more numbers. And so, I want it framed in their mind, it's about $15, $300, $100,000 of home value. And the general statement about what it would be used for to fund new facilities and allow for their, the expanded programming on campus. Based on your general impression of St. Louis Community College, how do you think you might vote? So, we put the stake in the ground and say, St. Louis Community College's reputation gets me a following. And we never say yes or no, because we're still talking about a hypothetical. And we, we don't say lean favor or lean oppose, but we don't say that in this, and we don't tell them that. But if someone says, hmm, I think I might be opposed to that, I'm not sure, then the interviewer has the option to put down lean opposed. But if we put that in there, we'd get way more that it's really the case, is people not willing to make, make a stand. Moving to 18, we set up the work that's been done. And one of the biggest challenges, well, then I saw this in the presentation by the architects, is the biggest challenge is deciding whether we should make them travel, students travel, and have like a center of excellence at one campus for a particular academic program, or if we could, should try to serve them and decentralize. I think I said in the cover note to Dr. Pittman, this is a hard question to write and get people to understand. I think it's important, but it's a hard question to write, to get them the ideas that are being considered. So, when we get, when we get done, we can go back and hash that through. The next set of questions with the X and Y and Z and A, those are for trying, you're trying to get their impression as to what would yank their chains positively about what the campus is doing, what the school is doing. Do they get really excited about nursing? Do they get really excited about biotech and think, well, I'd vote for that if they had biotech as a program that was expanding? Dr. Pittman sent me a handful of choices and said, we should discuss this. So, with your permission, we're close to the end, and so I can get your impression right now. I mean, after we finish. So, after that, it doesn't have to be four. It can be five. It can be six. These go, these go fairly quickly, because once we introduce what we're going to be talking about in this section, you can see, I've written it as, and Z, and what do you think about A, and those would be the program names. So, currently, homeowners in St. Louis County pay $15, $42.16 for each $100,000 of home value. What if all these projects were involved, and it's a little more than $15 additional? I think I need to put that word in, for each $100,000 home value. If that was happening today, how would you vote? And people who are in the three-favor categories will skip over the other options under the assumption that if they're okay with $15 addition, they'll be okay with the lower one, two. Those who don't fall into the three-favor categories will ask, but we'll ask them about 24. And we say fewer projects for now, because it gives, doesn't say, we'll just chop these off. These are still good ideas, just not now, and it's $9.50 tax increase instead. And then the same practice happens if they can't support that. Then we say about, it'll include even fewer projects, and they don't get to cherry pick which ones they, they are going to have. That's what you'll do. So, it's just a matter of seeing how much the cost makes a difference. But we have some wording that says, you can't get the $15 version for $6. That's not what we're saying. We're saying projects.
Just talk about that for a minute. You know, I've worked on several of these surveys, and that question, that those three questions are often critical to districts, organizations figuring out, you know, what's the voter's tolerance for a real number, you know? And, but here's the situation with community college. Our ask is so low. You know, it's hard to imagine that, you know, $15 for a $100,000 home. It, I mean, it, I don't know exactly how to say this, but it seems like, do you really want to know? I mean, what does $6 translate to in terms of the six cents? Is that three cents or something?
Right. These are the same numbers we had in the last survey, so.
And I'm not being critical. I didn't mean it that way. But I think now that we're farther into this, and we kind of, you know, we didn't know what people were going to be in favor of. But if you're in favor of six cents, it's just not much money. I mean, it's not for the individual voter, and for us to run a tax election for three cents is probably not worth it. Maybe I'm missing something there.
Well, things have changed. Things may have changed from the pandemic. So, I'd lobby to put it in, to leave it in and see what's different, but.
So, what, what you would do then, just to make sure I understand, is if they say, I'm okay with the first number, then you don't ask the other two questions.
No.
You only ask them if they say, no, I probably wouldn't want to spend another $15 per $100,000. Then you go ahead and ask question two, question three, to see if there's a number that actually gets them to be in favor.
That's right. And if they get in favor on two, the second level, then they skip the third one. So, we get, what we get is a cumulative total after the first one. First one is just the first one, $15, and then we move to 950 for the people who are negative, and we get a cumulative total. Everybody who said yes at 15, and everybody who becomes a yes at 950. And we do the same thing when we, when we do the lower number. And so, what we walk away with is at $15, we're at 56%. At, at 950, we're at 61%, and that's still within the margin of error, meaning it's the same thing. It didn't do a big, didn't have a big impact on people's support. But when we drop to, we drop to less than $6, we go up to 72, so that's statistically significant. I get to kind of play around, and we get to see how people of different ages and West County versus South County and so on feel. And I just think the pandemic, I've had, and it's always worked out. When I've done research during the pandemic, and I know it's still going on, of course, but during the, the kind of hot moment when we were really losing people at the highest point, we get a few people that would say in a comment, I can't believe that you're doing this during a pandemic, and where the economy is so poor. Well, it came back like, it was like this, Craig. It was fairly low. They've been fairly low numbers in the ask, and it came back positive. And the board said, okay, let's go with it, and it passed. So, your community may be different. I mean, maybe that when they say the pandemic is.
There's no doubt it'll be interesting to see how it's different across the four areas. Paul, what, what do these $3 amounts translate to in terms of the actual sense of increase we would be asking?
If memory serves correct, the $6 was a three-cent increase, the $9.50 was a five-cent increase, and the $15 was an eight-cent increase.
But we're, and, and we've kind of been working on the assumption, we'd probably go for six.
Yeah, five or six cents. I think more recently, we've discussed the six cents more so than the five cents.
So, and I'm, in the previous campaign, now 15 years ago, for whatever reason, they jumped from six to 12 cents. At the point, right at this point, when they were doing research and so forth, and, you know, we don't want to recreate that experience at all. We've been talking to people about six cents. You know, we really haven't, we don't want to go for eight cents. They could. I mean, I'd put more money in, in projects and so forth. But I just want us to be very careful that we don't mess around with these numbers. Paul, what, what are your thoughts?
Well, it would make sense to me, Dr. Larson, that we would use the same numbers that we used before. You know, that survey had, we felt pretty good results for us, and I think we're just trying to really see if the pandemic has really changed much of that. So, you would really lose that measurement if we start changing the numbers.
Okay.
I'm wondering if the six or eight cents, I'm not sure that would bother voter. When you go 12, you've now jumped to double digits, and that's kind of when you notice, you know, that it's, it's not below 10 cents or whatever. A six cents or an eight cents, as a voter, wouldn't make any difference to me.
Well, and if, if, if the eight cents gets strong support, you know, it'll help. You know, you can do more money with eight cents than you can do with six. It's sort of in some ways silly, but it's not silly, because, you know, it could mean we could do a lot more things upfront, sell more bonds, could mean that we would, you know, target some expanding, expensive programs like nursing more quickly. So, I'm not arguing that having more money is better. I just want to make sure we don't in any way kind of mess around with people's understanding of what we're about. And I'm thinking mostly of the very few people that are already working with us on the Bo Yes campaign. I mean, they, they've kind of been hearing six cents. So, if we do this survey, and the survey comes back really strong at eight cents, we'll just have to explain that to that, that group of, you know, relatively influential, but 20 people that are working with us already.
Well, and I will say, Dr. Larson, and you know this from working, whilst working together before, I'm going to come back very, with a very conservative view of these numbers. Unless you hit it out of the park on eight cents, I'm probably going to say, let's lean more toward the and give yourself playroom. And also, I wanted to say that these are, for instance, numbers in my, in my world. You don't have to pick eight, or, and did I hear you right, Paul? It's five in the middle, or is it six?
Five was the number we used before, Ken, but as Dr. Larson said, we've been, I think, kind of using that six number more recently just in, in our discussions local.
Okay, all right. Well, I will double-check my numbers, but I think I copied and pasted this and just changed the question numbers.
And the way you're asking them, I mean, it may seem weird to the board, but this is the right way to ask it. If you're just a voter that's getting asked on the phone, what do you think about spending more tax dollars? They have to put it in some context, and so many dollars for a $100,000 home is, is easy to grasp right at the moment. You know, trying to explain to them that we were thinking of some levy amount is impossible in this survey.
Yeah.
There should be an understanding that you're only doing $6 more. We're not asking you to pay $15. You already paid 14, whatever. You know, because when you say 15, then, then the perception is that's going to be $15 more money. But that's not right. Is that correct? It's how much? $14 you pay now?
Well, I've got $42.16 each year for $100,000 of home value in question 23. Yes. That's the information I have. So, if I've got that down wrong, please, please let me know.
And that, that is correct. That's based on our current tax levy.
Okay.
I just mean, you want to understand, you're not asking us to pay $15 more.
Well, actually, you are. It's $15 per $100,000 more. Right now, you're paying $42, and you would be paying $57, so.
I see. Okay.
But the other, the other point about that, I don't know if you can stress that in some other way, is that of their whole tax bill, the $42 is trivial.
And it's, it's.
But it's still much smaller than a lot of other entities that they're paying for.
Yeah.
I pay more for the museums than I do for the community college, the museums and zoo.
Yeah.
We have like that. Yeah, there it is, 27. It's sort of asked in a negative way, if you knew that only, currently provide only percentage. And I could not find that, Paul. What, what is your percentage for St. Louis County residents?
Um, the, the percentage of the, I'm sorry, of the home valuation, is that what you're asking?
I'm sorry. Question is 27, if you knew that St. Louis County residents currently provide only, and I might take only out, that's a little bit of a leading word, pay, I'm making it up, 25% of the funding for St. Louis Community College, which is the lowest rate among community colleges across the state, would you be more likely to vote in favor or against, or whatever it may be? And I forgot what that percentage was.
I will provide an updated number there for you, Ken. It was. Um, I will provide an updated number there for you, uh, Ken. It was um, it was forty-two percent at the time we did the last survey. Um, but based on our, you know, changes in our budget, it's probably a little bit higher than that at this time.
And, and Ken, that's a really complicated idea because there's, we, we talk about three bran- three ways that. Community colleges are funded from the state, from tuition and from local uh, property tax. Uh, and every community college has a different blend of those. What we have is the largest percentage of. I mean, forty-three percent, forty-two percent is the largest number. But the lowest tax rate because we have such a high valuation in St. Louis County. So it's an advantage to us to be in this economy where you can have a low tax rate and generate. Relatively large amount of money. I mean, you, you worked in Sedalia, I think you, you did, did theirs. And it's completely different. They're probably, their largest funding would either be the state or uh, tuition. And going back and forth, and we try not to raise tuition, which is true of all community colleges, but uh. You know, tuition represents, we're probably more than the state now, right, Paul?
Yes, that's correct. Um, the state has been over the last few years about thirty-three percent of our overall operating dollars. Um, that tax number has moved up closer to probably forty-five percent from local taxes.
I, I get the sense that you know what I was trying to do, but now that I read it and I hear your comments, Dr. Larson. Um, I don't think I did a particularly good job and is this important? Do you think you would, you'll get any benefit by saying, and if it's true, uh. Which is the lowest rate, and I'd have to explain that more carefully. Uh, tax rate among community colleges or the state of Missouri, I'll just leave out the forty-two percent or forty-five percent. Is it important? Sometimes we get into situations where people, especially with operating levies in school districts. They'll say, we're number nine of ten in White County, Arkansas, and will still be number eight. And I say, that really doesn't matter. We found, really doesn't matter. So is this question sort of a moot?
It, and the question is, is it gonna, I mean, we're using this to gauge what a voter is going to do, right? All voters. So if you, if you don't tell them that we have the lowest tax rate. At forty-two dollars, you could easily say forty-two dollars. For a hundred thousand dollar home is the lowest community college tax rate in the state. You could say that. But will that actually mean anything to a voter? I mean, it, it, it probably. Sways them to say, well, it's already the lowest and I'm going to go fifteen dollars more. You know, that's not a big, it's, doesn't seem like a big increase, but I don't want to lead them in any way. I mean, that's, I don't know. And if we're doing the campaign itself, we'll undoubtedly use that as a part of our marketing. You know, St. Louis Community College is a great value. We have the lowest tax rate in the, in the county. We're asking for six cents, eight cents, whatever we're asking for. It will probably still be the lowest. I don't know that that's true. Uh, Kansas City is probably close to us, so. Have to look and be very accurate about that.
Let me, well, we, last time we did a question about would the sunset. Uh, impact your voting and with the same answer choices and. A forty-two percent said, yeah, I'd be more likely to vote in favor and forty-seven percent. Was real close, said, um, it really wouldn't impact my voting decision. And nobody said it would make them more likely to vote against, so uh, they understand what the sunset is, I guess. Um, and the, the rest of it, if you're doing the math and going, what happened to the rest, is in, don't know. But almost half saying at that time, yeah, it would make a difference. Might not hurt to just swap this out because of the complexity. Uh, and.
Yes, I would agree with that. I, I hope we don't have to put a sunset on it, but if. If a twenty-year sunset or whatever numbers you ended up putting in there dramatically changed the yes votes. You'd be better to ask for it that way than run the risk that you lose it.
Yeah.
It's more, more than four out of ten said, yeah, I would be more likely to vote in favor if you told me it was going to end. At some point.
Yep.
Okay, well, we'll repeat that.
Think that's a better question, yeah.
I do too.
Okay.
Uh, this is Pam, I'm on the phone so you can't see me, but I think those complicated. Uh, questions about we're at this level or that level, I, I think just makes people tired of the survey. Because it doesn't, I don't think it tells people much. Maybe the sunset is more important, that, that's just my thought. I, I just know that people get pretty tired of uh, questions at some point. They just want to end the conversation, so. Omit unnecessary questions would be my theory.
You've done this kind of stuff before, Pam. I think, I think you're right. And, and you run the risk of it seeming like we're leading them on, you know, like. The language implies, oh, we're only asking for a small, you know, you don't want, we don't want to do that. You want them to have kind of a neutral. Give their impression from, you know, just literally what, what we're asking for.
Would you mind commenting on our, the look of our, of our yard signs, okay? You know, things like that. We try and stay away from that. But let's, okay, let's take that out and replace it with the sunset question, which was in the last time. And we can see how that's changed. I don't think we'll get anybody, I don't think we'll still get anybody that will say more likely to vote against, but how does the rest of it? Go, um, and then we finish up with demographics. Uh, that are on twenty-eight and twenty-nine and so on. And I, I don't mean to, you know, pick at a, uh, pick at a, poke at a bear here, but. Uh, I, I think it's important to find out what they call the college. Uh, do they refer to it as, um, you know, an individual campus name, or do they refer to it as St. Louis Community College? Um, just uh, talking to an associate of mine about this and saying, you may have. And some of you will be old enough to remember when Nissan was called Datsun. And when they wanted to change over to Nissan, first it was your Datsun Nissan dealer. And then it was your Nissan Datsun dealer, and then it was just Nissan. And that stuck with me as a way to transition. Well, if I transition people. To saying St. Louis Community College all the time, we probably need to find out. Um, how those folks refer to the, the organization, if you will, right now. And so that was the thought in this question.
I, I just want to go back to, I think Pam's point. I, I feel. We're asking a lot of the same questions we asked last time, and I'm just trying to gauge, are we trying to see if there's a difference because the pandemic's going on? Or trying to narrow our focus more, um. Because to me, the question is really, do they support an eight cents or whatever amount of cents increase? Some of the awareness pieces, I feel like I don't think that would have changed because of the pandemic. Maybe the support of a referendum would have changed, but not necessarily the awareness piece. And I don't want to lose folks in some of these questions that we don't need to know about the awareness anymore. We've already got that data from the last time. I just. Throwing it out there, do we need to focus more specifically on, would you support a uh, eight cents increase? Which is really what, to me, what's important or whatever sense we want to go with.
Well.
Oh, Kevin, are you all right with the idea of stepping down if they say no to another number and then if they say no to that, stepping down? It, it gives you an idea of, is there a number that, you know? Although I, I just, I still think it's not run, worth running the thing at three cents. I mean, it's. Spending that kind of money and time and energy for three cents isn't worth it. A nickel maybe? So a nickel and eight cents, maybe that's all we want to know about.
And, and I mean, yes, I think if we focus on those things rather than some of the other, again, the awareness pieces or. To me, I don't think it's going to be, we kind of already have idea what we want to see in it, so the. To me, we got enough information from there. Now it's like, what dollar amount do we approve? So if we know eight cents, Paul, I don't want to throw you out there, like, how much does that get us? I think five cents was two hundred million, if I'm not mistaken. I know you're looking for your unmute. There you.
Yes, thank you. Um, at, at our current rate, um, a five cent increase would, would bring. Um, enough debt service, and this is just quick back of the envelope calculations, but enough to pay debt service on approximately two hundred and forty million dollars.
So eight cents would be four hundred, um, not that much.
Three fifty.
Yeah, that, that'd be, that'd be close.
Three fifty, four hundred. So I mean, to me, that's, that, that's where we go to.
Another way to think about that is that, yes, we'll borrow money and do debt service, but we might also have another. Some number of cents, two or three cents in the operating levy that could be program support. I mean, the teachers probably wouldn't mind it if we, or the staff in general, if we raised salaries at a point when we felt comfortable and, and we'd have that. We do not want to campaign on that, but.
No.
We don't want to uh, say that it wouldn't be helpful.
And I guess that's where I'm going with the que- to me, it's more this, I view this as saying, okay, what, how much do people support? Do we have enough support for eight, ten, five cents? If so, then we have enough information to come back and say, here's our, well, we wouldn't because we can't promote, but we can say, here's. Information about the, the campaign, not to tell people to vote one way or another on it, but. To me, that's where we then show the voters what, some of these questions, what they, they care about, which is what I think we've talked about from the beginning of. What is each campus going to be impacted or what projects can be on each campus where they live in that community?
Right, and when we actually go to the voters, we, you know, we aren't giving them three choices. We will have made a decision, this is the importance of this meeting, literally. Because we have to have the right information from the survey to say, okay, let's ask for eight cents. And here are the projects that we ought to include at each of the major campuses. And here are three programs that we know we want to develop and really talk about and, and give people a sense of. Of how that would change the offerings for students. And it's just one app.
Kevin, are you asking, thank you, Kevin, are you asking? We're, this is what we're interested in. We're not particularly interested in what you think we should call the college.
Well, we've already asked that question. We've already asked all these questions in the last report, and so I don't, to me. If we're going back out there now, I'm really interested in, is there support for a referendum? That, I don't care about the awareness piece as much anymore because we've already got that information. I want to know, like. Is there enough support for a referendum? And if so, at what dollar amount do people support? Because to Craig's point, if it's three cents, we should just close the door and come back another time. But if people support ten cents, eight cents, somewhere in that range, then we need to keep moving forward. Instead of, I don't, I just don't think we need all this demographic background and awareness piece. Let's just get to Pam's point. Sometimes when people call for too many questions, they get sick of answering all the questions, and the most important one to me is, do you support? The community college referendum at this amount of dollars?
Let, let me offer a compromise.
I, I want to.
But Ken.
I want to, I want to ask a question.
Go ahead.
In, in, in political um, world, people are asked the question. Do you support this candidate? And then they go through what, if you knew this about that candidate, would you then vote for it? So it seems like to me that it, I, I agree with Kevin, that we're asking questions that we don't need to ask. If we want to get to the, the question of will they support this tax increase? You know, I think that's a lot more important, and I think that if you can make that survey less complicated. You probably get more people to stay on the line for the entire question, so. I, I agree, we need to omit unnecessary questions as much as possible, so. You know, asking a lot of those questions just makes people bored. And inattentive after a while, and they think it's kind of foolish. What, what somebody calls the college, you know, they're going to refer to it as junior college, no matter what we say to them. How many times have you told people it's the community college and they go, yeah, the junior college? You know, so I don't really care. They just know it exists. So to me, that's not important to ask.
Ken, you want to defend your questions or do you?
Well, I want to offer a compromise and the, the questions that were nine, ten, eleven and. Twelve, thirteen, fourteen, those are new. Um, those are completely different from last time. Last time we asked, we had a statement exercise where people. Reacted to whether a certain set of statements individually were uh, an appropriate way of describing the college or not. So we're moving into areas and what I, what we put these in here for. Uh, but I, don't worry, I have a way of, of shortening things. We put these in here because we need to know, you need to know, as you're going out and promoting. If you're promoting a program that isn't a good fit. With uh, the current belief about the number one or number two or number three. Biggest part of your population, your student population. If you are doing that, maybe it gives you information that allows you to, to make a slight shift or just an adjustment. When you're saying, if you vote for this, you're going to get this, this and this. Uh, and we'll be better off, better, we'll be in a better position to serve high school graduates. If they think high school graduates are your number one, that's instructive, but. Uh, my compromise is if we have one question and we ask them for the top three. But, you know, inside, terms of size, so let's say number nine, they, we asked them what, I'm going to read you a list. What's number one in terms of population, what's number two in terms of population, and what's number three, and then we skipped over. To um, seventeen and said, I really want to talk to you about an idea that the college has. Uh, and then move on from there. Uh, in the subject of. What people call the college, uh, I think that's one of those, it's so fast, that question is so fast. And I think it's going to be so valuable as you talk about, as you, as you send previous messages for the community. To know if they've even heard of St. Louis Community College, because they know Florence and Bell. And that's the way they think of it. Um, and so it's one of those, why not? It's pretty short. Uh, it's in the demographics and, you know, take out seventy-seven. What do we think about a, a compromise where we just have one question that they ask people instead of nine? That deal with, um, what do you, what do you think's the top populations are being served right now? Because if they're misinformed, um, then you, then their chances of being supportive are much less. They don't have a. No, base of knowledge. So that was my compromise as we were talking with.
It would shorten the survey quite a bit, right?
It would.
Five minutes.
It would, and you know, it gets, it looks a lot longer than it really is because we put in all the answer choices. And that takes up paper, but um, we could saw, serve the, what I'm trying to get. Information for you, because I think it'll be helpful to say, people who think. Current, recent high school grads are our number one, and if that's accurate, then that's great. Let's see how they say they would vote. Uh, and I'll, I will demystify all of this when we do the report. I won't, I won't make you follow down the rabbit hole. Um, to figure it out. Just think that's important information.
I just look at my, my, I'm not speaking for all people my age, but I. If I spend more than a minute on the phone, I'm over the phone limit, and so to me. I'm more willing to do a survey like the text message, you know, that more and more companies are doing where after you get up a call, they might ask you five questions. And you just send a response and it, you're done. I, I don't have to, and again, I, I, I just don't want to.
You're never going to answer this survey.
No, I will never, and I'm just saying, we're missing a huge population.
Nine out of ten people won't answer this survey. There's no, right now, there's no solution to that. But we use cell phones and we use, and the, the important information is. The one person out of ten represents to a ninety-five percent accuracy what the voters say.
Right, and so I guess.
I mean, that's what you care about.
Right, and so I get back to the thing, the question I care most about is, do you support a referendum and at what price? The rest of the questions I really don't care too much about, and I'll be off my soapbox for it. I just feel like. We've done the first one. At this point, I want to know as a board member, is this worth going down? Do people support the community college enough for a referendum or not? If not, I don't care about the rest. That's, that's Kedra's work to do, as she's been taking the feedback, I know, from last time and other areas about a brand awareness and. Or even what they call it, I, I don't, to me, it's, do you support? This much money?
The final decision of the board is, do we go forward or not? But the other data can help us with a campaign if we do go forward. You know, so why wouldn't you want to know?
On the other, on, on the other hand, if, if we get, if we get the sort of pared down result. I think a focus group may give you that information about branding and um, education that's needed. Um, you, you know, because I, I think a lot of people. Um, you know, because I, I think a lot of people are, are turning to focus groups to get same information that they get from, you know, a phone survey. So I guess.
They're both good. I mean.
A focus group will give you 10 opinions. And this will give you 600 opinions. So the statistical reliability.
All the people who are not Kevin. There are age groups and the ones that probably get called if they're making a hundred thousand dollars or more. Those people are going to answer because they've been paying taxes for 50 years. And they kind of want to know, what am I have to pay for now? I, I'm sure that you hear from, from respondents, I pay taxes for my kids. You know, or I don't have kids. Or, you know, now someone like, like me is very happy to do it because my grandchildren live here and go to school. You know, so it's not, the heavens of the world are not necessarily everybody who's going to answer this survey. And you're not going to get anybody. And if we kept, have, and we go catch it correctly, that respondent's going to say, I don't have time for this.
And straight, and we'll move on. And we'll move on to the next one. It's actually one out of six contacts. One out of every six contacts we have will participate in the survey. Uh, that's because our interviewers, if I can pat them on the back, are really good about keeping people on the line.
I guess, Ken, just quickly, my perspective on this is, you know, I think you're trying to get to the number we would want to shoot for, but we also need the, the ability to sell this thing. And, and we need to find, I mean, as a campaign, I would think you want to know, what are those things that this group of people really think is significant that this college should be doing? I think to me, that's pretty important when you, when you go to try to sell this.
You will get the final answer that me, Kevin and others are looking for. And it will be clear, uh, as, as it was last time, but it was more of a, for instance, time. And now it's down to brass tacks. But if we don't do something upfront, you know, talking about the programs, they have no context. Are you talking buildings? Are you talking programs? And they're not in a position to understand buildings if they haven't been on the campus. And so that's why we ask the ones up front. Have you taken a class there? To know if they've been on the campus, a campus, um, that's context to find out what they support in terms of what you're thinking, that's context. And we get a much richer answer uh, from, from that approach. And trust me, this is not that long. Uh, we have not run out of people ever. Uh, and our spread of ages, uh, you, I can look up last time, but the last time ran, if I'm not mistaken, our biggest age group was 25 to 55. And so, um, that's, you know, in, in one of your sweet spots. You know, it's not older people waiting for, um, waiting for a Wheel of Fortune to come on the TV. I mean, it's a good spread.
Except for the fact that 25 year olds don't vote much. You know, people vote in a, in a ratio that equals their age. So 25% of 25 year olds vote. 60% of 60 year olds vote.
Well, that's, that, that may be true, but when you're talking a tax increase, that goes up. Uh, because it has a personal impact on them. I mean, so do, so do elections offices, obviously. But you're talking about my pocketbook here, so.
I still don't think it changes. I've never seen it change.
Well, we've never had COVID before. And as much as we think negative about COVID, COVID has people who are going to need to be retrained. COVID has people who are, and, and hopefully interested in popping out of this darkness we've been in and going to college or going to school is a very positive thing. When you get out of a situation, realize you don't have savings and realize that you need to find some other way to move forward, the first place to go for that is the community college. And maybe people will see that as necessary. I don't know that, that might apply the reason our numbers are starting to move right now.
Yeah, this, this would be a typically, a typical spread for public school district where we would do research is, um, is about the same. Uh, and that's drawn randomly. They're all voters. Uh, and we could, we could ask them if they voted. Last one would be the presidential election, uh, and, and only have people who said, yes, I voted in the last presidential election, uh, take this survey. So we have a little bit better edge there. Uh, but, uh, this, this spread is always, always the same. It's, it's like a bell curve. It's low at the younger ages and low at the uh, older ages and, and more in the 25, 35, 45. Uh, and that's how we categorize them. That's why I'm thinking, yes, 27 year olds too. Uh, but, um, and, uh, those people, it helps us know what the different age bands, what their intention is in terms of voting. Uh, whether they intend to. And we could ask if, you know, would you, would you, would you vote in this? I say, even for our conversation. We could ask that.
Oh, I don't think that's any way to get in. They're all going to say, oh, yes, I'm going to vote because everybody wants to look like they're responsible citizens. So I, I, I wouldn't trust that answer one way or another. So it's my cynicism.
Part of the campaign itself is, an August election is going to draw, we can go out and do research and get a real number, but it's going to be 15 to 20%.
Yeah.
Doesn't draw a lot of voters. And that skews who's going to come out. I mean, if, if there's a negative to this, then all of a sudden, the no voters have a heavier weight because they can, if there's no, no, if there's no particular reason that the no voters are organizing, then we have, I mean, Kedra and the, the Vote Yes Committee have a big role to help turn out the people that like the college to go vote. That's what you want them to do.
Right.
And from a message, another messaging standpoint that people often forget, and I was, because I remind them every time, uh, when we do something, you not only get the data, you get to be able to say in any encounter, uh, whether it be, you know, citywide promotional mailing, whatever, we asked you. And this is what you told us. And we need that context to be able to say, we asked younger voters and they said they were okay with it. We ask older voters and they said they were okay. It just gives you so much more, as I, I think you used the term before, rich information that, um, I think it's valuable. This is actually a little shorter than the previous survey, by the way. And we got 600 without any trouble. Um, when, that was that one to six ratio held true. So you got nice people. Um, and, uh, and they have an interest. So let's, let's talk about my compromise upfront. Does anybody object to that? I would knock out seven, eight, nine questions.
I'm supportive of that. Uh, I think charter is better. Um, and I, I happen to agree after listening to everyone's comments that we understand what our brand is. And we don't need any questions to understand our brand. So I'm comfortable getting a knockout question in there.
I feel the same way. And I, I just think it's so interesting, my friend Kevin, when he said, one minute is, is a limit on a survey. But I guess because I'll be 76, uh, this year, one minute is not my limit on a survey.
And I, I can tell you, Kevin, I have a board member on every single project who tells me, well, I'd never answer this. And I say, well, we've never run out of people. So I understand that. You're busy and you might not take care of it. That's fine. We have others.
If, if we pick up the call, right? You got to pick up the call first, unknown numbers. That's step one.
Yeah. And the, and the, the college will need to do a little promotion. This is a real deal and we'd like to hear from you. Um, and here's what to look for on your caller ID. So, so if I took nine and asked for the top three groups, and then we delete 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, uh, 15, and 16, how would people feel about that?
I'm comfortable. Sounds good.
Okay.
Good, good, Ken.
Let's do that. Um, I think 17 is important because it speaks to their belief in the college right up front. Before we talk about details, uh, 18 is the centralized, decentralized question.
Could you put that back up, please? Uh, Paul? Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah. Eighteen, yeah, there we go.
Well, 18 and 19 are kind of the heart of what we're doing.
Yes.
And I know you might want to be like much more direct. But we've got to get there. We've got to give them, again, there's that context. I'm going to, I'm going to ask you a que, really what we're saying is, I'm going to ask you a question, but I'm going to explain the, the options here, rather than just say, do you think it's centralized or, or decentralized? And there needs to be a positive and a drawback on each one. And the drawback on, on one of 19 uh, has to do, um, I'm sorry, 18, uh, has to do with the fact that it wouldn't be robust programs at all the campuses. And the other is you didn't have to drive, students would have to drive. So they don't get to think of it only in, this one sounds good and that one sounds bad. We have to lay out some facts for them. And then we say, as you think about it today, really kind of taking them off the hook, but what's your impression? No. And then we give them an option for, depends on the cost. We don't tell them that. Depends on the cost and depends on what is included, which is their will, way of bailing out. And then 19 and following on with 20, 21, and 22. And again, we can have more of those program questions. Or as you said, Dr. Larson, the, the corrupts of it, what would make them really jazzed about voting yes, that you're going to add nursing program or biotechnology? And the email that I got from Dr. Pittman had the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight on there. Uh, and that was after I did the, the draft, but, um, this goes very.
Well, that's just so you could pick and choose from, Ken.
Yes.
Yeah, I listened more than what you would ask.
Everybody probably doesn't have access to this. So let me read them and then you can kind of keep a thought as to what you think we should ask. If this is in the uh, colleges plans, what would, what would it do to your vote? Healthcare, IT, financial services, biotechnology. Then you have transfer programs, liberal arts, hospitality services, mental health counseling, manufacturing.
Can we see it on the screen somewhere?
Let me see if, can I call that up? Oh, and, uh, and or send it to you or something? Let me get it, um, get it called up and we'll see.
Ken, I think if you could share a screen, you should be able to pull it up there.
Okay. Let me, let me get the email message pulled up and, uh, then. Okay. Technical wizardry here. Hey, let's try that. Here's me. Yes, there it is. Okay. Move your pictures out of the way here. It's the one in the middle here from Dr. Pittman. And it has those. Oh. Financial services. Yeah, I said. Is everybody seeing that?
Yeah. Yes, I see it.
Okay, great. My gold star for the day for being able to do the share screen and not lose everybody in the process.
I understand.
It's this. You're on now, yeah. Dr. Pittman, I will tell you, I read mental health counseling and manufacturing. And I thought, what is mental health manufacturer? When I read, and then I'm like, no, manufacturing is.
It's, it's Annie. Um, my comment is, um, I, I think we should have mental health counseling anyway, no matter what. So I don't know that I wouldn't take that out as a, as a pick, because I think that should just be something that we're going to provide with, um, maybe at the Family Resource Center. Um, so um, that's just my two cents. And maybe I'm just being protective of it. So.
Oh, sure.
I mean, I think the other, um, just, it's just my two cents. And somebody can talk me down. I mean, whatever, but, but that's, I, personally, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put that in there, but I would, because I would assume that we're going to, in my, if it was my college, we would, we would be, we would definitely be spending the money on that. Um, anyway.
The question, whether this is a service we provide or whether it's academic.
It's act, it's actually a program. It's, it's behavioral science.
Okay.
Technology at Wildwood. And I think the question I'm interested in, with a reason, I, I just put it in a way I thought people could understand it.
Okay.
We may want to rethink what you would call that program. I don't know if behavioral health technician. How, how best to say that?
Yes.
Maybe even just behavior health. Uh, Jeff, I think just behavior health might be enough context clues.
Okay.
Do we have to pick out of them? Can we run them all?
No, I'm going to say yes, because to me, it's, uh, it's less, uh, less difficult than the statement exercise that we did last time. Because we introduce what we're going to be talking about. And then we say, here's a program. If that was on there, would you be more likely to vote in favor, against, or whatever? Here's another program. Here's another program. We're not pulling something out of the view book and giving them the chapter and verse. We're just saying, and we can say expanded, Annie, if that would, uh, also help expanded behavioral health, uh, programming, because I think that has to be, we're not, if we have it, then, um, we need to say it's going to be more, I think.
What I, I, this is.
I know what you mean.
I didn't, I thought that this was like a service that we were going to provide. I, I didn't understand that this was programming. So I think mental health counseling program is, is, is great. To me, when I read mental health counseling, I think that's a program that we're going to offer. You know, a student as a social service. So if it's a program that we're going to be teaching, then great. Absolutely put it in there because that's, that's a great, absolutely mental health counseling program, you know, so that you can learn how to be a mental health counselor. So I just, I, I miss on, I misread it. That's all.
Okay.
What I like about this list is it covers everything. You know, so if one thing isn't of interest to you, generally find something else that is, this is pretty broad. This covers a large swath of individuals' interests. And, uh, and if our program is behavioral science, program is named that, we should put what the program is in our, whatever it is that's in our program book. Of course.
Yeah, that, that's fine, Mary. Uh, I should have stopped and taken the time to do, have done that.
It's okay. We'll get it in the second draft. Well, these, these would go quickly if we did all of them and we would rotate them so they don't hear the same one first. Uh, but it will be, it would be very interesting to see which one hits it out of the park in terms of, um, the percentage of people who say, if you put that in a, in a ballot issue, I'm going to be more likely to vote in favor of that ballot issue. Because I think that's hot stuff and I think we should have it at community college. Uh, it doesn't mean you change anything. It just tells you, uh, and maybe beneficial to the, the committee that maybe the balance of what you talk about is tilted toward healthcare because that's what makes people go.
Well, St. Louis Business Journal listed some of the programs that, that people are most likely to want in jobs that you're most likely to get. And I was stunned to find out that financial services was number two. It had not dawned on me that that many individuals would be interested in financial services, but their survey said it was number. It had not dawned on me that that many individuals would be interested in financial services, but their survey said it was number two.
That's not me. I heard a phone ringing. Well, this would make it a question count about the same as what we, with now that we've. Eliminated those questions upfront and we've eliminated, swap that one out. The percentage of. Of what you pay for the community colleges support. We've swapped that out for some. So we wouldn't be adding, we'd actually be adding less time because again, the phrase like how about A, how about B, how about C? And we'll fill in the names. So I think that's a good change. I really do. Certainly will. We'll make those changes and then I, I had a question. And it's on question. Well, it starts on question twenty-three and it just dawned on me as we're talking about eight and five and three. I always preach that most people don't really have a good sense. Spelled differently about how many cents is on their levy, particularly when you, you know, catch them on the phone and you want their initial impression. But I also can be talked out of leaving that out. It, it could be something like that would add. Then on twenty-three, add eight cents to the levy, which would be a little more than fifteen dollars. I mean, it's a phrase. And we could do that for the people who do know. Or who, for whom eight cents would ring a bell in their head. And that's fine. I've done both. I've done both and it's been, it's been fine. I revert to this format most of the time. But how do people feel if you? Should we add just a little three-word phrase about?
I, I like that, Ken. I think it may help us get a sense of. You know, what people think, what, what they're comfortable with as we try to figure out how to market this.
Okay, great. Well, we will make that change to twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five, rec- recognizing of course that. Some people will only answer twenty-three, some will answer, answer twenty-three and twenty-four. Some will answer all three. And those who answer all three in the way we don't like will get number twenty-six, which is. What's the deal? And that's where we'll probably get a handful of pandemics and. You guys getting enough money and.
Very important though to hear that. Very important.
And, and it, I always say that's the last opportunity for them to get down in the weeds and tell us something we've never heard before. That could be helpful. And I, I'll, I will give, of course, you're the client. I'll give on anything, but. I'll give on twenty-eight if, if you think it's kind of beating a necessary horse. If I can mix my metaphors, then I'm fine with that. Getting rid of current number eight.
I think Kevin's wisdom on that would carry the day. I'd drop it.
Yeah, I agree.
I think numerically, we've got a shorter survey than we just, than we started out with. And I know it's shorter than last time. So this is probably ten minutes and we'll tell them it's ten minutes upfront. But again, the interviewers that we've worked with since ninety-two had really good. At massaging up through an interview. And throwing in the right phrases at the right times, nothing to do with the questions. They read the questions verbatim, but just, oh, you know what? We're almost done. Can you hang on for another two minutes? And so we get one out of six.
You know, and I'm probably stepping on a, a hot pole. But I don't think I'd bring up, did you vote in the presidential election? It has nothing to do with this and it's still. Too sensitive and we're still too close to the election. It could change people's frame of mind.
Well, and I think he was going to use that for a screener. If they didn't vote in it, then you'd say, well, thank you very much. Goodbye. And, and I, I don't want to do that. I think I'd like to just have a random. You know, six hundred voters. They're not regular voters. They're just voters.
Yeah, I agree very much.
I don't, I don't think asking a presidential election question really relevant because that's a much higher percentage of people anyway. So I, I would agree not to include that.
I guess his idea, and I've never, he and I've never had this conversation, it's not, if you didn't vote in November.
What the hell?
Why are we even?
Right, right. We don't even want to talk to you if you can't vote in a presidential year.
Some, with some K-twelves, we do in the last two bond issues, which were in. You know, two thousand twelve.
In a school election. But we, we have no way to sort out our voters because we do so few elections, so.
And if you only get ten or fifteen percent, yeah, there you go. You need to make sure you have the right number of people in the survey.
The good news is there's less polling places, so it's cheaper for us to, to run a referendum. Because there's not as many polling places out there anymore. So now that you get a, you get a vote anywhere in St. Louis County. It makes life a lot easier for county residents.
That is actually going to be a, a big factor for us.
You might get more people turn out.
I mean, they could do a lot of things, yeah.
And you, you know, in Kansas, you can vote in an election like this by mail. And if you set up the timing and you do it by mail, it tends to. Really go in your favor because the people who are most interested and positive tend to get it done right away. And, but you don't have that. So, all right. Is there anything else for the good of the order? I have what I need to get a draft back to you, a second draft back to you tomorrow.
And you're going to launch this?
As you say, it's okay. Yeah, and hopefully this week. I'd love to do it this week.
So you're, you're ready. Okay, great.
Yeah, and then we will follow. We didn't touch on this, but I will need some feedback on the student survey, which is online. And the staff survey, which is online, which will be online. But the approval of the phone survey, because it takes so long to gather six hundred opinions. Is more important. Because we can give students and staff a week to ten days to respond and we'll have a week to ten days right in the middle. Of the phone calling. That I, I'll have time in front that I'll be able to work on it and they'll all, they'll all merge together then at the end. Results will all be coming in about the same.
The other thing is looking at the schedule for the college and don't be doing it in the middle of testing time or fi- you know, mid-finals or. You do, if you want to get people to answer you, they, they'll be sure that. I can't think of anything right now, but there have been times when something came through and you're like, well, don't they know I'm right in the middle of finals? Or don't they realize that we're A, B, C, D? So kind of check with the school calendar to be sure. That we're not conflicting, at least with, with finals.
Oh, I agree. And, and any sort of planned holidays too, like spring break. I don't know if you have a spring break, but if. You do, we would want to skip that time too.
About to get through all that, so.
Good, okay. Yeah, I might, my thought is if we get on the. Get on the phone, say Friday of this week, fingers crossed. We get on the phone Friday this week, we'll have a draft of this. Ready to be looked at Wednesday of the, of next week. And if we get an approval by the following Monday. We're one week into our calling, but we've got two, two to two and a half more weeks to go. Because we don't call at bad times in the day. We don't want anybody. Having their results influenced by the fact that they got up from dinner to answer the phone. So it takes a little while. But that's the schedule on that and it's not going to be these questions specifically that it'll be a lot about. Student views on whether the college needs more things and programs. Really short.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Look at Jeff's puppy. Yeah, look at Jeff's puppy.
I don't see him.
You don't see Jeff?
No, because I'm, you know.
Got it.
That's a happy puppy right there.
Let me see the puppy. I want to see.
And can you remove the share screen?
Yeah, then I can see the puppy.
Now you gotta.
Oh, okay.
Well, we've had an appearance by my cat. Now we need an appearance by a puppy.
Puppy's on his way.
Sounds good. Okay, Rod and Pam will be jumping on the policy link, just FYI. So we'll see.
Thanks.